Okay, record of attendance, Linda.
What?
Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Approval of agenda with additions or deletions. So we have 12A, first reading parking violations by law. Are there any more additions or deletions?
No. Then I will to accept the agenda to present with the addition.
Okay, so moved? Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes. Town Council, August 14th, 2014. Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, September 4th, 2014. Moved and seconded, discussion? Okay, we need to sound a little bit more enthusiastic. Woo! Okay. Sorry. Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Questions being called, thank you for your enthusiasm, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, much better people. Town Council, September 4th, okay, that's the third one. We just, did we just do that one? Okay. Okay, moved and seconded, and can I hear a third? Questions being called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Presentation, Tri-County Women's Center regarding the Services for Seniors Pilot Project. So welcome. You can both come up and introduce yourselves, and we're gonna put it on presentation. It's good to have you with us.
Thank you. So I'm Kathleen Mooney, and I work for the Tri-County Women's Center, and my position is called Women's Economic Security. And some of you may recall that I presented to council a year and a half ago, approximately, regarding the project. And the goal was to try to find solutions to women's economic security, or to find ways for women to earn more income. So we worked with community partners and tried to figure out what we could do, and we came up with a number of ideas. But tonight, we're here to present to you one of our plans, which I guess we feel that council should know about, and that the community could benefit from. So we've started a social enterprise. A social enterprise is just a nonprofit business, or a business that is owned by a nonprofit association. And the purpose of the social enterprise is to earn money, and the money is kept in the business. And then we hire more people and keep the business going. So the sole purpose is to actually hire people who have difficulty finding work elsewhere. So we've started a program, which we call the Services for Seniors. And the Services for Seniors will address a gap in our community. Working with community stakeholders, what we discovered is that although there are other organizations providing services to seniors, there seems to be a long wait list for some of the services. So we're attempting to fill a gap. And we will pick up some of the work that the people, the clients seem to be waiting for the longest. And those, maybe you can distribute the postcard? Let me just grab one. So we've got little postcards that we're gonna hand out to you. So the services that we will provide are services of basic home support services, like housekeeping, laundry, meal preparation, lawn care, wood management, odd jobs, transportation to appointments, and assistance with grocery shopping. So what that means is we actually will send out an attendant, a person with a vehicle, who will pick them up, bring them to the grocery store, help them to buy their groceries, bring them back home, help to unpack the groceries. So that's assistance with grocery shopping. Transportation to appointments could be medical appointments, or any other appointments that they need to get to, and they don't have a way to get there. So these two kinds of, like certain kinds of services here are not covered by the Yarmouth Argyle Home Care Association. They don't provide transportation, they don't provide lawn care or wood management. And what we mean by wood management, we're not talking about cutting wood with chainsaws. We're simply talking about stacking wood, moving wood from the outside of the barn, maybe to the indoors. So we will do any odd job, basically, for a fee. Our program coordinator is Melissa Amuro, she's here with me. I should mention that our fee is $20 an hour. And some, I guess the geographical reach of this program, for the moment, we're starting in the Yarmouth area, which means Yarmouth, and about 15 to 20 minutes on the outskirts, for the time being. So we'll drive as far as Port Maitland, Chabogue, Chagogen, Arcadia, Tuscat, those kinds of surrounding villages. We have women that we've trained, we should mention, we had, we put on a training program in March. We've trained 15 women, and it was a four-week training. We provide training in certificate courses, your typical ones like WMS First Aid, CPR, food handling, occupational health and safety. We're also requiring the participants to have criminal records checks, and provide a driver's abstract. And they're also asked to put additional insurance on their vehicles to cover for this. So the good news is that if seniors cannot afford the service, there is a government service that provides funding for this. And it's through continuing care, and I'll turn it over to Melissa, and she'll explain a bit about the program, and maybe I'll hand out these sheets.
Thanks. The program is called Lend a Hand Program, and it's, the money is filtered down through the province into Southwest Health. There's, the seniors need to show a demonstrated need for the task that they're asking for. So they need to show that they perhaps can't vacuum on their own, you know, because of maybe Alzheimer's, or not Alzheimer's, sorry, arthritis. They have to be under certain incomes, which are $22,000 for a single, or $37,000 for a couple. They need to call the phone number at the bottom of the page if they're interested. And once they've set up an appointment with a care coordinator, they come out, do an assessment with the senior, go through the process of how it's going to work, what they're allowed to have, how often. And then they're given a list of who they can contact to have the services provided. We are in contract with continuing care right now, so we're able to direct bill, rather than have the senior pay out of pocket first, and then wait for their reimbursement, which is a huge help. I think that's pretty much it, it's pretty basic information as far as that program's concerned, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Mood. Kathleen, you mentioned earlier that your service is to assist, I guess, to eliminate the long waiting list. What waiting list are you referring to? As you know, I'm on the board of Argyle Home Support, and at our last meeting, our waiting list is down to like 60 hours, approximately, which is quite low. And in looking at a lot of this, a lot of these things wouldn't be things that a group like Argyle Home Support would be doing, I'm assuming.
That's correct.
So I'm just wondering, the waiting list, you had mentioned, I'm just curious, what waiting list is that?
There was one, and like you, I understand recently that it's been reduced. But apparently, there was one. So seniors that were waiting for certain things, like just housekeeping, meal preparation, which were less urgent needs than, say, personal care or respite care, were being placed at the end of the list. And sometimes, at least during the winter months, they were waiting quite some time before they got the service. I'm not sure how long.
So these people that are referred to you, now, do they come through the community care coordinators? Or they come, so they're the, so we're looking at people that would not be normally getting the type of things that are, not our ends, but our CPAs, people like that would be, our practitioners would be doing like medications and that sort of thing.
Oh, no.
The sort of thing that you guys are doing. Are being more or less, as you say, housekeeping, laundry, meal preparation, et cetera, et cetera, lawn care. So it's a lighter end.
Right.
How does, I'm giving an example, and don't take this the wrong way. I have an 88-year-old mother living with me, my father died a number of years ago, and I'm taking care of mom. We don't need the help, of course, but how would somebody like her, if she was living on her own, find out about this? I mean, we have a card here, but how do, how do people know this? And I appreciate you being here tonight, but how do you get the word out? Because a lot of seniors who could really use this probably don't even know it exists.
Exactly. A lot of people don't know it exists. It's a pilot project, and we just hired Melissa the end of June. We're in the process of creating marketing materials. These here are kind of a quick little card. We're gonna create ads for the Vanguard, and a lot of other marketing materials. Our intent is to go and to every trade show or event that involves seniors as possible. Tomorrow morning, we're going to the recre, the seniors' games. We're going, we're booked in to go to the seniors' expo that the VON is organizing. The thing is that the seniors who need it the most, who are at home, don't go to those things. So we're trying to market to the general public, so that hopefully, they'll identify people that could be clients for us.
Not a parting suggestion, I'd have a stack of these at bingo games.
Okay, yep, yep. So it will take some time to get the word out, for sure. We'll, we're trying to do all the, you know, direct marketing activities, presentations to groups like Rotary, booked in. So it will take some time.
Councilor Doris?
Thank you, Your Worship. Kathleen, Melissa, thank you very much, very, great presentation, learned a lot. I have three questions. One, I understand, I heard that there, you're charging a $20 an hour fee, is that a flat fee?
It's a flat fee.
There's no transportation cost, no?
It's just a flat fee within town limits.
Within town? And then out of town?
Out of town, there is actually, through the Lend a Hand Program, if someone needs to go for a medical appointment to Halifax or Kentville, there is a transportation allowance. There's actually a transportation allowance for local as well. So the transportation piece, if people are going through the Lend a Hand Program, they'll have a monthly budget for transportation. As for us, our workers would be within the town areas.
Okay, would that then, I don't know how that works, is that, is that paid to the patients?
We, we bill the client.
Or do they pay, or is that transferred directly to you?
It depends. If they're with the Lend a Hand Program, we will direct bill continuing care for any service. So the senior won't have to pay out of pocket at all.
And if not?
If they, if not, we bill the client.
Okay. Can they contact you directly?
Yes.
Okay, and?
And they do not need to go through the Lend a Hand. If they have private insurances, or veterans have a plan, or they just have enough income to pay out of their own pockets, they don't have to go through the Lend a Hand Program.
Okay.
Another thing I should mention is, it's for seniors, we're targeting seniors, but we'll also serve people with disabilities. So there's no age group, if anybody's inquiring.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, this is a one-year pilot project.
Right.
What is in your plan after your first banner year? And you find that you are overwhelmed with the need for your services?
We have discussed communicating with an SCC, and partnering perhaps to do a training component, so that we would always have students. There's also, say, the continuing care program ongoing. We might be able to partner and provide job placements. Right now, we're trying to get it off the ground, and we're trying to have enough clientele, so that next year at this time, we have enough income to maintain and sustain the program. So it's not something we've had to worry about as of yet, but we would be constantly recruiting through employment agencies, and perhaps putting on another training program like we did last March, and perhaps partnering with an SCC.
Okay, well, I wish it for you, I did not mean to put you on the spot. It's just my training is to look not at today or tomorrow, but 10, 20 years down, I always look ahead. That's all. Thank you very much, and I wish you, wish you well, we'll do what we can to support you.
Thank you.
Get the word out.
Deputy?
Just a comment and observation, it's a program, I think, well needed in the community, and certainly, I know that from my own point of view, my own, our own business. So, thank you, and congratulations, both of you.
Thank you.
See you, and see you sometime.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Business arising, Community Asset Donation Program. Councilor Linda?
Mood, Your Worship. Counsel was circulated at our last meeting, a copy of the Community Asset Donation Program. This is an initiative that has been in the works now for, correct me, CAO, but I think close to six months to a year, by the Communities in Bloom Committee, back and forth. I want to acknowledge David Solos and Martha Cassidy, who worked very hard with me on this, and our whole Communities in Bloom Committee. It's a very exciting program, and counsel was given a copy of this for their perusal, and any thoughts they may have. And the Communities in Bloom Committee did meet last week, and wholeheartedly endorsed this, and is recommending to counsel that the town of Yarmouth adopt the Community Asset Donation Program as presented, and that is my motion.
Moved and seconded, go ahead.
Just, just further on that, Your Worship, I think we've, I wanted to also acknowledge that the CAO has looked at this as well, and we've taken a lot of his comments at heart, and some of the counselors have pointed to it. For the members of the public who are wondering what on earth we're talking about, we are making it, the idea of this motion passes is that if someone in our community wishes to make a donation for a specific item, such a park bench, or a monument, or something to the town of Yarmouth, they can do so through the town, and it will be a tax consideration. Similarly, you could come in and make a donation of $10 or $20 to something we can do to beautify the town of Yarmouth. The whole idea is, is to encourage people to maybe help beautify the town, to plant more trees, put in more park benches, you can even put in more garbage cans. The difficulty has been, has been the signage and the acknowledgement, and this has been solved in this. And if this should pass, I will have some questions for the CAO as to where exactly we go from here.
Okay. Questions being called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead.
So, thank you for all your support, and now, Jeff, what do we, now, does this, this is, apparently, we've now done this, so what would be the next step to get this now in action? Is there, do we have to do any hearings or anything like that? I'm not sure if that becomes a bylaw, or how do we fit, or maybe a question for Greg, just to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's simply a policy, Greg can correct me on this, but simply a policy in terms of what we will do internally when people make certain donations to us. So it isn't a case that we're, a bylaw, typically, we use that if, only if we're required to, but under statute, or if we're trying to impose something on the public. In this case, we're setting, we're giving staff direction in terms of how to deal with people who want to make donations. We actually had someone at the counter today who wanted to make a donation, and so we took information, said we'll have to get back to you, because counsel's considering a policy tonight, to give us guidelines in terms of how much to accept for certain, for certain things, and what commitments we will make in return for those donations. So now that the policy is agreed to, you've given direction to staff, we'll set up an account internally. We'll create some paperwork, or some, some information that the public can have. We'll put it on our website, through Facebook and whatnot, and obviously, in, through your own efforts as counselors to, when you're talking to citizens, make them aware that we do have a policy for this, and we'll follow it. And if we run into any, any issues at all that might require, you know, second thought on any part of the policy, we'll bring it back to the council table at that time.
Good. Intermunicipal Service Agreements. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, Worship. This is, this is almost a repeat of something we've already done. A few months ago, we approved versions of two agreements between ourselves, the town of Yarmouth, and the municipality of District of Yarmouth, and Argyle. And they were dealing with the Mariner Center operation, so we had, we had a draft of an agreement to enter into a shared situation on Mariner Center, where Argyle would participate in the operational deficits, and obviously, the governance. The, the other agreement was to, to provide, I guess, a standard for how we would deal with properties that are jointly held between three municipal units, either, either by the three units, or by an agency of the three units. So those two agreements, we, we had approved in the earlier versions. The other councils, and particularly, Argyle, had, had some, some constructive suggestions for, for the Mariner Center Agreement, to make sure that it was clear it was about operations, not about capital. And in the taxation agreement, we, we made some changes that, that deal with properties that, that we would, we would perhaps have commercial tenants for, dealing with the taxation in a slightly different way, but having the same net effect, that we would not collect taxes, any one of the units would not collect taxes on property that we, that we kind of jointly own. So the, a classic example, this is the airport. In our airport agreement, as it, as it has existed for the last nine years, taxes were payable to both the municipality of Yarmouth, where the lion's share of the, of the airport exists, and a small portion of it exists within town, and the town collected taxes on that. In the future, if those taxes are paid, if it's a taxable property, the units, units that collect the taxes would then rebate or provide grants back to the other units in the amounts of their, of their contribution towards those taxes. So the net effect is no payment, but there might be a, there might be a financial transaction there just to, to have it on the books, because some properties are taxable. So with that in mind, the agreements, if, if you wish, and Greg has made the amendments that were requested, and CAO's reviewed them, I'd ask for your approval of those two agreements, as amended.
Do, we're gonna do them together, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, moved and seconded. Did you have a question, deputy?
I think this, I'm happy to be part of what's happening, and I think it's the appropriate thing, and as we share even more services, I'm, so I'm pleased to support the effort of our administrations of the three units. And we can look forward to more sharing in the future. Thank you.
Good, moved and seconded, any more discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. New business, Amendments to Minimum Housing Standards Bylaw, first reading. CAO?
Thank you, Worship. This is the, the amendments that were recommended by our billing inspector, where the exiting requirements exceeded those required under the National Billing Code. And so we talked about this at the Committee of the Whole last week, and so the amendments are brought forward tonight for first reading. So a motion to, to approve first reading would be in order.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Amendments to Marketing and Promotions Levy Bylaw? Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, Worship. We spoke about this at the, at the Committee of the Whole meeting last month, sorry, at the council meeting last month, and it was, I advised that these amendments would be coming forward. The amendments are at the end of the bylaw, I think, just scroll down here. But they deal with, they deal with the governance around the, around the bylaws, around the funds, sorry. When the levy was first put in place, it was agreed by council of the day that a committee of the property owners that collect the levy would be formed to direct the funds. And so that has been done, that was done at the time, and has continued since then, although it was not formalized within the, within the bylaw. So we're just cleaning up some governance there. And as you know, the Room Levy Group has an intent to, to work with YASTA, to be a, an ongoing funder of that, of that organization. They, they are looking at a memorandum of understanding that would have a three-year term to try it out and see if it works. And so this, this amendment, if it goes through, would in fact allow them to do that. So that's for your consideration.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm a little confused, senior moment. So we are making some amendments to the bylaw, yet we cannot amend the part of the rooms. Am I reading that right? And why is that?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we're amending the bylaw to formally create the, the committee and give it its authority. The, the issue of the number of rooms is enshrined in the, in the Legislative Act, the Act of the Province of Nova Scotia. And so in order to change that, we need to have our MLA take forward a recommendation from the two councils, because it's one, one act that oversees both municipal jurisdictions. And the MLA would have to take forward the amendment, and the province would have to amend the act before we would have the authority to change the number of rooms to go below 20. So I can let you know where we are with that, in terms of the committee. So the committee met today, and they did review the act, and the couple of provisions that they might consider recommending to the councils, that they be amended. One is the number of rooms, and the other is the rate, the maximum rate that can be collected per room night. There was quite a bit of discussion about it, and they've, they've requested more information. So for instance, the Province of Nova Scotia licensed fixed roof accommodations in our area, they want to know how many rooms each accommodation has, so that if they, for instance, reduce the number to 10, how many more properties would, would actually be, be, be involved, and maybe none? So if they reduced it to five, how many more properties would be involved? And they can also get data on occupancy rates, generally, and apply that, and figure out how much more that would mean to the room levy in terms of financial, financial gain, based on, based on history. So they, they didn't make any concrete recommendations at our today's meeting, because they need more data in order to make an informed decision. So they're meeting, actually, on the same day as the, as the October council meeting, they're gonna meet that morning again. And if they have recommendations coming out of, out of that, we'll bring them forward to council.
Good, go ahead.
So Lisa's still in the, it's in the hopper that they will look, because I, I still think the comments that I'm getting from many individuals is that they feel that everybody who sells rooms in the town of Yarmouth should be charging an equal room levy, that everybody should be on the same page. And I'm kind of hoping that some of that voice is heard by the committee and comes back here. I'd be a little disappointed to hear us lower it down to 10, when that wouldn't mean that many more properties. But on the other hand, we've got some very nice establishments in this town, which we're very grateful for. But it's kind of, I think it's kind of fair to even the playing field across all the accommodation sectors, that everybody's on the same page. So that's, I'm glad at least they're considering that, Your Worship.
CAO?
No, I'll, I'll leave it there, that's.
So you're looking for a motion? So we're looking for a motion, yes. Approve the first reading of the, respecting the Marketing and Promotions Levy. Okay? So moved? Seconded? Oh, yep. Oh, okay. Oh, all right, sorry, deputy, okay? Any more discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Reports, Council Advisory Committees, Deputy Mayor?
There's been some controversy on this motion and the direction that council took. And I know in my place, I'm a little bit confused on the direction we seem to be going. So therefore, Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that we table this matter until the next meeting of council to allow us to gather more information. The concern is, as I was a little surprised with the Rotary Club, because doing a web search on Rotary Clubs, this is a huge project of Rotary Clubs worldwide to do dog parks. And just on the three, first three pages, I've counted 17 Rotary Club dog parks, and there must be a reason why our Rotary Club would be going against the international standard of Rotary, which was surprising me. So I think we need more information in fairness before we proceed with this. So that is my motion, Your Worship.
Seconded?
Yes.
No discussion, we just need a seconded. So you seconded that? Okay, questions being called? All those in favor tabling? Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, deputy.
I move that Heritage Day 2015 be referred to the Heritage Committee.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that correspondence from the Tri-County Regional School Board, Reed Community Enhancement, New Elementary School, be referred to the Yarmouth Recreation Committee for a recommendation to council.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that correspondence from the Tri-County Regional School Board, Reed Community Enhancement, New Elementary School, be referred to the Yarmouth Recreation Committee for a recommendation to council.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that all councillors be encouraged to participate in the mural project at our Mariner Center.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Nay. We're three to two. Okay, motion carried. Yeah, I did. I think Madeline did. Yeah, I think that happened before. What's that? What? No, no, three, two. It was carried. Yeah, no, it's carried. Okay, go ahead.
Now, what I would like to say is, no, no, that's fine.
Go ahead, deputy.
We've all agreed that we all will go on our, we'll do our own.
You do your own thing if you want to do it.
I don't even know.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. We did agree at the last committee of the whole meeting that we all agreed that we would decide for ourselves and we'd go on our own and do it out of, pay for it out of our own pockets. And I still do not understand why we at then, why this motion was even made.
I don't know.
What was the need for the motion if we all agreed in the beginning that we would all individually decide if we would do it or not, and we would pay out of our own pockets?
So the motion came up, and then we had that discussion after. We had already passed.
The motion, just so I repeat the motion, I move, it's that all councillors be encouraged to participate.
Yeah.
So we're not saying you should.
Exactly. Okay, go ahead.
I move that the EMO coordinator, Harold Richardson, be invited to make a presentation to council to explain the role of EMO for council and the public.
So moved? Seconded? Discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
I move that staff be permitted to amend the minimum housing standards by law to be consistent with the National Building Code.
They're way ahead of us. Moved and seconded.
Go ahead.
Questions being, did you want to, questions being called? All those in favor?
Yes, I will, I will speak to it just for a moment. I'm not, I'm.
We just passed, we already went ahead with it, by the way.
Can I vote on it too?
But we went, it's, it was just, we just did it.
Yes, I know. Far be it for me to try to fight the National Building Codes. And yeah, I'm agreeing with my colleagues, I'm going with the majority. But I do still, part of me still has, I have this hesitation to put someone into an apartment or a home with only one door to get in and out of. There are just too many things that could happen. There could be an emergency, who knows? The last white won. If we did not have, if we didn't have two doors on the house, we would not have gotten out of the house or out of the windows. So I'm, it's, that's just my little block, that's all.
Thank you. Deputy? Is that it? Did we vote on that?
No.
All those in favor? Oh, we did.
Yes, you did.
Okay, good. Did you have your light on? Go ahead.
No.
All right, citizen advisory committees, planning advisory. Deputy?
The, from our advisory committee meeting of September the 2nd, I have a motion to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the municipal planning strategy and the land use by law to explain, to expand the permitted uses in our two zones on Main Street, Can Street, and Gardener Street as outlined in our planner's report, excluding medical clinics.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? CAO?
No, there was, there was one item within this amendment that was the topic of quite a bit of discussion at the plan advisory committee, and the committee asked that that be brought forward to council. So council was aware that the provisions, the provisions in this amendment were not in their entirety unanimously supported. And the item was with regard to the square footage of the retail opportunity that would exist in the R2 zones. In this, in this recommendation, it would be 3,000 square feet, and there were some members of the committee who felt that that might be too big. And just wanted council to know that heading into a public hearing. Obviously, you'll hear from the public on that, and maybe some of the members, but they just wanted to be clear that you understood that it wasn't unanimous in terms of that particular issue.
Good, thank you. Councilor Doss?
Thank you, Your Worship. If I could ask your indulgence just for one moment, have someone re-explain to me again, go over why we, why medical clinics were excluded? I don't remember.
CAO?
Yeah, I spoke to that at the committee meeting particularly because Yarmouth has been, has been successful, kind of bucking the trend, I guess you would say, in terms of having a fairly vibrant downtown. There's, certainly we have a ways to go, and we continue to work on revitalizing our downtown. But our town has done some things right that maybe other towns missed the opportunity to do back a few decades ago. Our town insisted that office uses and like banks and so on needed to be in our downtown zone and couldn't be in other zones. And professional offices, same thing. So in spite of the numerous attempts over the years by various businesses to try and get council to relent on that provision, council has held firm that those uses needed to be in the downtown in order to create a competitive advantage for downtown. And so medical clinics are almost in the same category. You are permitted in some other zones to have medical clinics, in the Milton Commercial Zone, and as well up in, up at the hospital, you're permitted to have medical clinics in our new health and wellness zone. But at the plan advisory committee, that was on the table as one of the permitted uses within the R2 zone along Main Street, Can, and Gardener. And I spoke against it because I felt that it too represents a bit of a competitive advantage for downtown, and we need to be careful about giving up those competitive advantages. You can do retail in any commercial zone within the town, and you can do a number of those other uses within any commercial zone. But there are some uses that are very limited application, and I guess you would say, in other commercial or industrial zones. And I asked the committee to consider removing that, and the committee agreed. So that's why the clinics are not still within the proposed amendment.
Could you break that down one more time for me, please? I still don't understand what that advantage is.
If you want to have a doctor's office, a medical office.
Now I can hear you.
Okay, of any type in the town of Yarmouth, there are only specific places where you can have that. You can have it in the downtown area, you can have it in Milton, you can have it at the hospital in the health and wellness zone, but you may not have it on Pleasant Street, you may not have it on Stars Road, and other commercial or industrial areas down on the waterfront zone, you can't have it. So it is a, it is an advantage to downtown, that it is a competitive advantage for downtown, that if a medical use, a medical office use is, someone wants to do that, they have to be downtown. Those uses generate traffic, right? They generate foot traffic, and they generate just regular visits. Doctors' offices and other medical uses tend to be fairly busy. So the idea is, because our council created some uses in the downtown that, like banks and so on, that were only to be downtown, so that downtown had a fighting chance against the trend a few decades ago of malls and then big box stores, our town has held firm on that. We are told by travel agencies, travel agents that have applied to amend the bylaw in the past, that we're the only town in Nova Scotia that doesn't allow a travel agent in the mall. And to that, we have said on a few occasions, and it will stay that way, because having the travel agents in the downtown creates some traffic, office uses. And so when I saw medical clinics included in the R2 all along Main Street, it's different than some of the other uses like retail, because you can do retail in any commercial zone, but you can only do medical uses in a few, including downtown. And I think that's good for downtown, that that is the case. And so I spoke against it.
Thank you. Good. Okay, so that's done. Reports for information?
We need to, there was, we need a motion. I moved, and I think Ken seconded.
Okay. Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. Reports for information? No questions there. I got a mayor's report, I didn't do one last month because it was summer, but it was a crazy summer. "We all know time flies, and this summer passed by at warp speed, but it passed in the most positive fashion. What a difference a ship makes. Thousands of visitors found their way into the province via the Nova Star. They shopped in our stores, ate in our restaurants, slept in our ends B&amp;Bs, hotels, and motels, took part in our experiences, and enjoyed our hospitality. There can be little doubt as to the economic impact on this entire province and beyond, and we most certainly felt it right here in Yarmouth. In my many conversations with leaders throughout the province, it's confirmed, the ship has begun to make the difference we all know she would. As tourist season slows down, it's imperative that we do two things. First, we need to celebrate our successes, just as it was with the ship. With little leeway time, we stepped up to the plate in many areas. We provided visitors with the experience they were looking for, a mixture of food, fun, and hospitality. No one does it better than us. A very special thank you goes out to the visitor information staff, who provided top-notch service to thousands of visitors. Second, we need to look at what we need to do differently. Council passed a motion last month to hold a public meeting to discuss this very point, which includes how we can help each other take full advantage of the next tourist season together. The meeting will be held in October, and the public will be advised of the exact date. Over the past couple of months, I've met with a number of business people who have already taken bold steps here in Yarmouth, and with quite a number of others who are working towards establishing themselves here. We're all excited about the purchase of the, and subsequent plans for the jail, and just across the street from there, a beautiful building is being restored and will be home to a restaurant that I'm certain many of us will frequent. That's just the beginning, there's lots of meetings going on. The past couple of months have been full of activity, including filling two vital positions within the town of Yarmouth. We extend a warm welcome to Carolyn King as the Director of Planning and Development, and to Natalie Smith as our Economic Development Officer. The experience and expertise that each brings as part of our team is vital in us moving forward. There's much to be done, and these positions will play a part in ensuring council's priorities, including being more open and inviting, and increasing the tax base that are kept in the forefront. October 24th and 25th are the dates for the Entrepreneurship Expo, which is being held at NSCC Verge Campus. The day will include keynote speakers, panelists, workshops, one-on-one consultations, a trade show atmosphere, and much more. If you're thinking of expanding your business, this is the place to be. If you're thinking about starting a business, it's also the place to be. That includes businesses big and small, as well as students who are interested in opening a summer business for next year. Lots of information, and the media will have that information passed on in the coming weeks. The acoustics plan is in full swing, and council is working on various components. Presently, they include streetscape improvements, bump outs, and of course, the facade program. And it's encouraging to see that so far, I'm going to say 28, am I still right on 28? 28 businesses on Main Street are taking advantage of this program, which means downtown Yarmouth will look different this time next year. There's still time for more to sign up. At the very least, we encourage you to make a call to see if the program fits with your plans. Council will of course discuss going further with this program next year, as the response has been excellent. It's important to understand that this is simply, not simply about looking good, but also about creating an environment where current businesses thrive, people want to gather, and new businesses are looking to open. As I say every month, there's much to be done, but when a community is resilient as we are and determined, it's important to remember that we'll get there if we do it together. The Now or Never Report stated very clearly that a change in attitude is needed if we're going to turn things around. I can say that in Yarmouth, we're on our way, and of course, I say that with a big positive smile. That's the mayor's report. I also wanted to say, and I must have done some amendments, and they didn't end up in there, and for some reason, I guess I just wanted to say this, though most people know, everybody at this table, everybody at this table is out most nights in meetings, and so I guess you can't count the hours that are put in on every front, whether it's communities in bloom, or planning advisory, or whatever it is. So there's always something every single day going on to move this town forward. And I'm just, I'm just thankful that we're all part of it. Counselor Dennis?
Yes, Your Worship, I just have a question for the CAO. Do you know when we're going to get, Acoustics is going to get back to us on the facade program?
We've asked, we've reached out today to find, to get an answer to that. I did get a couple of emails that came in during the weeks that I was, that I was off, the two weeks I was off, and I responded to those. So I hope that didn't set them back too far in terms of their timeline, but we'll find out hopefully as soon as tomorrow, and I'll circulate an email to council.
Good. Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship. On the two positions that have been created, the Director of Planning and the Director of Economic Development, I'm curious, I've been asked this, two questions, are they probationary positions or are they permanent positions? And secondly, are there, I think, what's the word I'm looking for? Not expectations, but goals established for those positions to see that they are proactive? In other words, that people are doing as they should be doing, especially in one of those positions there, is that in place as well?
Go ahead.
Yeah, the positions are what I like to call continuing positions. What that means, that's code for permanent, but I also believe nothing is permanent on this planet, so they will continue on. Every position also that we hire for has a probationary period, so both of these positions have probationary periods. The answer to the second question around the expectations, they're very clear, they've been articulated to the, to the, to successful candidates, and they will be, they'll be further clarified and as we go along. The economic development one, as you know, is a new position, and it will be working, the person in that position has a unique opportunity to come in at a time when we're also creating a new ren. And so figuring out the right interface there is critically important, that we not be duplicating or working across purposes, and that I've been crystal clear about, and I'm confident that we won't, we won't be, as you like to say, cross. when we're also creating a new ren. And so, figuring out the right interface there is critically important, that we not be duplicating or working at cross purposes, and that I've been crystal clear about, and I'm, I'm confident that we won't, we won't be, as you like to say, cross-piling sawdust over knot holes. There are specific things within the town that we are uniquely positioned to do, things like our downtown revitalization. The ren is not going to do that for us. So, that leadership has to come from this council, and from within the town of Yarmouth, and that will be part, that will be on the Economic Development Officer's agenda of things to do, as well as obviously working with our, with our businesses within the town to make sure that we understand, I guess, their, their needs, and maybe where they're going. If they're willing to share that with our Economic Development Officer, if she's able to tap into, into resources, be they information, money, whatever, to assist them, that'll be a big part of her role, is knowing the business community, helping to connect business to business as much as possible, and grow our economy one job at a time. Obviously, and finally, I'll, I'll say this, if I have, if you'll indulge me, is that council, back almost a year ago, said that we need to do a brochure, we need to promote ourselves, the town. And we, we talked about it again a couple of months later. I said, you know, we're, we're not ready, we're, that's step four of a longer process. She'll start on the step one, and work us through, and get us to step four, five, six, seven, and, and beyond. So, those things are, are the kinds of things I've discussed as being important for that position.
Good. Questions for committee chairs? Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think if, if I, if I recall correctly, I think I should be addressing this to the Chair of the Communities in Bloom. I had, a number of months ago, I had requested I'd put a motion forth to, to ask, to ask staff to install both a trashbin and a bench about halfway through Broadbrook Trail, and I do believe, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, I believe that Communities in Bloom wanted to adopt that. I am, I am correct? Yes? And I'm just fine, then I will ask, I will ask the Chair of Communities in Bloom, just to, just for an update on, on the bench. I know there is one trashbin at the beginning of the trail, but the people, people that asked for both of these in the, from, in the first place have been asking for updates. They're saying, "Summer's over, where's our bench?"
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. To respond, two things. Number one, purchase of the bench and the purchase of items like that is a capital item that would naturally go through the CAO's office. Communities in Bloom was looking at it primarily from a donation point of view, and we were looking at the Community Asset Program to come in place. So, to answer your question from our end, tonight, we approved the Community Asset Program. So, now that we've got that in place, projects, as you suggested, would become a priority, of course, for fulfillment. The actual allocation of benches and that sort of thing is something that's worked out with the Parks and Grounds Department and the CAO. Maybe the CAO wants to address it as well, but I, I do know that we've had discussions with the park staff, and that they are looking at a number of replacement benches, I think, throughout the town, CAO, if I'm not mistaken. There are some plans. And just as recently as this week, we, I had a discussion with the CAO if we could, Communities in Bloom wanted to get a, I know it may seem silly, but an actual map of the town showing where every bench is and garbage cans are, so that we can maybe better systematically put them out, so they're more equally and equitably distributed, so that we can come up with a council recommendation for next year. So, that's, that's where we're at with that, counselor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just from the, from the staff perspective, the, the request was passed on to, to Public Works, along with all of the other requests we have for garbage cans and benches and other street furniture. There is a small budget that we, that we allocated last year, but we do have some opportunities for, for street furniture within a couple of current projects, so it's possible we might be able to pick up some additional benches, garbage cans, that kind of thing.
Great, all right, thank you. Because they were, they were looking forward to, to a bench halfway through the Broadbrook Trail during the summer. And I have a question for, for someone who isn't here, unfortunately. I was going to ask, I was looking forward to asking the Chair of the Emergency Measures, when exactly the next EMO meeting is scheduled for. Reference was made twice simply to the fact that it was going to be in September.
So, I, I thought it was October, because I specifically asked if it were before the presentation. It's important that we have that, that next meeting before the presentation.
So, we still don't know exactly what date it's going to be? I, I know that it was brought forward, I think, over a year ago, that some of us here on council felt a little left out. We, we didn't know what was going on when, who was having what meeting when, and it was requested that, that information be shared. And it has worked very, very well, for the most part. But this particular one, I would like to know the date. It's only, only the month has been referred to.
So...
That information, either I don't get, either I don't get the emails, I'm the only one that doesn't get the emails, or-
No, 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 no. I, I can tell you that-
That's the only one that isn't shared.
I can tell you that mine often go, for some reason, they, they get diverted as well. But he hasn't set a date, because I don't, I haven't seen anything yet.
Oh, all right.
And it's usually last minute.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Go ahead, CAO.
Yep. So, EMO used to meet on a monthly basis on the first Tuesday of the month. And so, you could, you could pop it in your calendar, and that's when they met, with the exception of a couple of months in the, in the wintertime, when the EMO coordinator would be away, we wouldn't meet. The EMO Board decided that meeting every other month was probably, probably enough. So, my assumption, my, my ongoing assumption is always, I, I keep an eye on the second, sorry, the first Tuesday of the month, and I watch for a meeting notice. So, if you want to kind of tentatively pencil in your, in your book when that meeting is, I'm going to guess it's the, it's the first Tuesday of the month. Since we've passed that in September, I'm going to say October. And I'm going to watch for a notice from Liz from the municipality, and if I receive it, I will let everyone know.
Go ahead.
By the way, we did ask, we did ask all of the people responsible for sending out meeting notices to include all members of council, and we've received cooperation from most. So, you should get most of the meeting notices, whether you're on the committee or not.
We do. Most, yes. Good, okay. Additions. So, we have one. First reading parking violation bylaw. CAO?
Oh, thank you, Worship. We met yesterday, and had a pretty good meeting, I thought, to talk about the parking violations bylaw, and I guess our goals in terms of what we want to see done with it, and, and council, everyone was there and gave their input. And in fact, there were a few members from the, from the business community who were also there, who, who gave their input. So, I, I went and looked, and looked at the bylaw. There were a few things that came up. One of them was the geographic boundaries that we, that we control parking with time limits. And the geographic boundaries of the bylaw is the entire town. So, where it's enforced is where signs are put up, and the traffic authority is responsible for putting up signs. And so, council's desire, or the desire of the group yesterday, to include Water Street and to expand north and south, that would be within the purview of the traffic authority to do that. And my suggestion would be that once we've settled the bylaw, in terms of is it one hour or two hour, then we can, can order the signs and, and make the appropriate areas, or the areas that are desired to, to be either the one or two hour parking limit. And I would also suggest that perhaps at the committee of the whole meeting later this month, that we talk about those specific geographic boundaries, the traffic authority and the committee of the whole, just so we're on, all on the same page. So, the viol, sorry, the, the geographic area does not have to be part of the bylaw amendment. The second item that was agreed to by everybody is that, that when the bylaw was first brought in, brought into existence was when parking meters were removed. And the intention of the bylaw was to ensure that there was a, a dynamic movement of vehicles in the central business district, so that customers of the businesses could, could reasonably find a parking space somewhat near their destination any time of day. In other words, nobody would park their car on the street all day long without penalty. And so, the bylaw has been in place, looking at Jim again, was it 1984? 1984. And the same one hour limit has applied. It was clear yesterday that everyone present agreed that we still need to maintain that dynamic, that movement of vehicles in and out of the central business district from the parking spaces. But it was also unanimous that the, that the time limit of one hour was insufficient. Two proposals that were discussed received equal, I would say, support from the people in the room, including the citizens, and they were either a 90-minute or a two-hour change, and gave this some consideration, and felt that we should bring this forward as soon as possible with one of those two proposals, so that you can consider it, so that you can get to a public hearing next, next month, so that you can make a decision hopefully next month, and we can get on with the changes that we want to make. So, I, I, without belaboring the issue, I've, I've included a two-hour limit within this bylaw. And the reason I chose the two hours, and it was discussed at the meeting yesterday, is it's probably the easiest to communicate and understand, from one hour to two hours. So, and 30 minutes one way or the other, I, I settled on two hours. The second thing that was discussed is that the, was the fine itself for violating the, the, the time limit. Presently, if you, as it's written in the bylaw, it is $15, but if you pay it within the first 14 days, it's reduced to $5. And so, we refer to it as a $5 fine, because hopefully, most people come in and pay it within, within the 14 days. We agreed that a $5, or we seemed to agree that at $5, it was, it was almost a nominal penalty, and a little more inconvenience to pay it than the actual value of the penalty itself. And so, with that in mind, I'm proposing here that we increase the penalty from $15 to $25, and the reduction would be to $10 if you pay it within the first 14 days. And so, that is, those are the two amendments that are within the bylaw that you have here. There was only one other thing that I changed, and that was with regard to the, to the parking permits. The parking permits gave, give an exemption to, to the holder to section... Yeah. It, it, it was a very small thing. It was, it gives you an exemption to the time limit in the parking lots, but the way it was written, it actually gave you an exemption to having to occupy one space within the parking lots, and, and the other regulations around the parking lot. So, I just added the subsection that specifically talked about the time limit. So, those are the only, the only amendments. So, tonight, if you approve first reading, we'll proceed to advertise a public hearing for next month.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I want to really commend the CAO and staff for moving at lightning speed on this one. This is wonderful. I'd like to make a motion that we proceed to first reading with proposed amendments to the parking violations in the town of Yarmouth bylaw.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Hello. He's clerk too, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm the CAO, and I'm also responsible, under, under the act, the act refers to a clerk and treasurer as two, two separate roles, and I carry those too.
Good.
Question, CAO?
Go ahead.
Please, Your Worship. I'm going to keep it short, because I think we're, we're all anxious to break, or break a record and get out of here in, in record time for a change. Is this the place, the time and the place here in this bylaw, this parking bylaw, Jeff, to bring up or consider restricting those few parking spots that are directly, but in right before pedestrian crosswalks? If we could restrict those, I know we discussed and, and considered restricting those to the size of cars, either, either compact or subcompact, because they are so, so dangerous, they block the view for, for oncoming traffic. We don't get to see who the pedestrians are that want to jut out onto the pedestrian crossing before sometimes it's too late.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. The, so, the signage, any signage related to parking in the town of Yarmouth is, is the authority of the traffic authority. And so, he was present at the meeting yesterday and heard the concerns about the, the visibility. And I, I think he took note of that, but I'll ensure that, that that's something he looks into in terms of the, those parking spaces that are immediately adjacent to crosswalks.
All right, thank you very much. And are we saying goodnight to one another now, too?
Not yet.
Oh.
Approval, oh. Approval of invoices. Good? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Data next meeting is October 9th. Anything in camera? Okay.
Information. Your Worship, in a senior moment, I should have read my old minutes. The November meeting, did we agree to move that because of UNSM? I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure if we had done that or not, because if so, that should be done. Because if so, I'd like to make a recommendation, we move the November meeting to, I think it's Thursday, November the 13th, because many of us will be away at UNSM that time. Be Thursday the 13th.
13th is the second. The second.
No, I don't believe it is. Let me just double-check my old handy-dandy calendar here. 13th is the, is the second. That's right, we don't have to move the meeting. Though, that's the UNSM, though, is it not, Jeff? I'm just wondering where we are. So, we're okay, sorry. Okay, we're good to go.
Good? Okay, so, motion to go in camera. You're right. It will be. You want to, are we going to need to come back? Okay?